Okay, good morning. Today is Tuesday, March 25th times 9:30 a.m. And Clerk, can you please do roll call?
Commissioner Malika.
Here.
Commissioner Henson.
Here.
Commissioner Pinter.
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio.
Here.
Commissioner Baca.
Here. Everyone can please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, just need a motion to approve the agenda. Commissioner Odoricio, did you have a change?
Yes, I would ask that we move the item Y from six, Y from the consent calendar. We can move it to new business if we, do we prefer to move it to new business or future date? That was my question for the staff, like.
New business would be appreciated.
And then at that point, if we decide not to vote on it, then we can kick at that point, but at least we can have a discussion here.
Yes, sir, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I would move to approve the agenda with moving six Y over to new business.
I'll second. That motion passes five to zero. Um, we don't have any awards and presentations this morning. Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
No, we do not.
We do not. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come to the podium to talk under public comments? Not seeing anybody? Any elected officials communication? Not today. So we're on to the consent calendar.
Chair, move to approve the consent calendar with the change specified earlier.
Second.
There you go.
Second by Pinter. That passes five to zero. So we're on to new business. We have the senior deputy county manager, Alicia Reese.
Yes, ma'am. Our first item is a resolution approving the use of state awards and other cooperative agreements in the not to exceed amount of 1.4 million for the purchase of vehicles and light to medium duty trucks. And our fleet manager, Mike Gutierrez, will present this item.
Good morning, commissioners. Mike Gutierrez, Fleet Operations Manager. Adams County Light and Medium Duty Fleet averages about 370 vehicles. A total of 26 vehicles will be replaced in 2025 for the sheriff's office that have reached and exceeded their full useful lifecycle. Vehicles will be purchased on Colorado State Bid Award or other approved government cooperative purchasing agreements. Fleet is requesting the use of these awarded agreements for the purchasing of these light duty vehicles in the not to exceed amount of $1,400,000. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Malika and then Henson.
Thank you so much for being here. Um, quick question on fleet, just because I'm newer to this board. Do we have a goal of when we turn over some of these vehicles, I understand not all of them could be electric vehicles or hybrids or anything like that. Do we have a goal internally about how many we are trying to reach at some point when it comes to our fleet?
Yes, we do. So we are working on electrifying our light duty fleet. First of all, we're working on getting charging the infrastructure. Once we have that, we will move to electrifying as many vehicles as possible.
Okay.
So these vehicles are patrol vehicles, Tahoos. There are not any EV vehicles for this application yet.
Okay, thank you.
It's coming though.
Commissioner Henson.
Thank you. Hi, thank you. Uh, so what is, what is the expected lifespan for these vehicles?
For the patrol vehicles are three to four years.
Three to four years. Okay. And is that, and most of them, I know that some are involved in accidents within the line of work, but do we generally, do they, do we manage to keep them running for three to four years for that lifespan?
Yes, we do. So once, once a fully depreciated vehicle, for example, a patrol vehicle, and it's still in decent shape, we move it out to Flat Rock and use it as a training vehicle.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you. That's, that's helpful.
Use it in another capacity.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay.
Madam Chair, move to approve as presented.
Second.
So I have a second by Malika.
Yeah, right. She, I, she beat me to the button.
I beat you to the button. We have a touchscreen here. So second by Malika. And that motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Mike. Good to see you.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Insight Public Sector for Microsoft enterprise licenses in the amount of $7,772,810.73 for a cooperative agreement. And Jason Schultz, our Director of Information Technology and Innovation, will present this item.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. Jason Schultz, Director of Information Technology and Innovation. This is a, uh, this request is a part of our three-year renewal for our Microsoft agreement. We use primarily 90% of our technology runs on Microsoft. That's everything from all the operating systems, laptop, desktop, servers, email, messaging, content collaboration, file storage, database, security tools, and all of our software development environments as well. As part of this three-year agreement, which is done on co-op for the state of Colorado through Insight, we would like to upgrade from G3 to G5. That will give us enhanced security compliance and business analytics. So as we look to secure and harden our environment, um, we want to also make sure that we have the business, business analytics in place to, to stay compliant with our annual audits. The amount of $7,772,810.73 is the total three-year amount. The annual amount is $2,590,936.91. That works out to be about $809 per staff member per year for all that we get. So our recommendation is to approve the three-year agreement and move from G3 to G5 for the enhanced security and business analytics tools. Thank you.
Any questions for Jason?
Madam Chair, if not, I move to approve as presented.
So I have a motion by Henson, a second by Odoricio.
I'm going to stop touching the screen.
Yeah, go ahead and let's go ahead and vote.
I second Kathy's motion.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And Jason will stay with us to present a resolution approving an agreement between Adams County and Insight Public Sector in the amount of $1,177,538.76 for VMware services, also a cooperative agreement.
Good morning, commissioners. Jason Schultz, Director of Information Technology and Innovation. We use VMware software. It basically makes our entire data center all on-premises, um, software run on top of our hardware infrastructure. And in 2023, VMware was purchased by Broadcom, and then they've moved to a subscription-based model, and they are requiring a three-year agreement moving forward. So that is why we're speaking with you all today. The total amount for three years is $1,201,350. Works out to be about $400,403.50 per year, but this will just allow us to continue to provide services high availability, and this is part of our critical infrastructure for backups and disaster recovery, which keeps our, our services running and high availability. Thanks.
Any questions for Commissioner Henson?
Thanks. Thanks, Jason. So are you comfortable with this three years? Since they've moved to the subscription model, are you comfortable with three years, committing three years that you feel that this is going to meet our needs ongoing, that they'll be evolving? And so that three years from now, or in the third year of the contract, we're going to still get what we need from them?
Yes, um, we've used VMware for probably about 10 years, and most of our enterprise infrastructure are on three-year co-op agreements, so I'm comfortable with that. However, we are starting to lift more and more into cloud services, so we'll reevaluate it at the end of three years and see how much we want to keep on premises and how much of our services we can move to cloud to save for capital expenditures.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Oh, interesting.
I'll make the motion to approve this contract as presented.
Second. The motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Next is a resolution approving Amendment Two to the Agreement between Adams County and M.A. Mortenson Company in the amount of $28,399,780 for the guaranteed maximum price for our construction manager, general contractor services for the Riverdale Regional Park Improvements Amendment. And to present this is Byron Fanning, Director of Parks, Open Space, and Cultural Arts.
Thank you, Alicia, and good morning, commissioners. I have a brief presentation for you today regarding the contract with Mortenson for the improvements at Riverdale Regional Park, including the outdoor covered arena, midway, three barns, and site infrastructure. You may recall this slide from our study session on March 6th. Today's agenda item ties to the boxes highlighted in red at the bottom of your screen, which add up to $43.4 million, which is Mortenson's guaranteed maximum price for the improvements at Riverdale Regional Park. Of the $43.4 million total, approximately $15 million was approved as an early release package in public hearing on November 19th in order to get this work started. Today's agenda includes the balance of the $43 million guaranteed maximum price highlighted in red for $28,399,780. This will provide funding to complete the scopes of work mentioned on the last slide. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Odoricio.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you for your work. I know that there were other broader, bigger things that we're looking at long-term. This is getting us down the field while also recognizing some, some upcoming priorities, and I think that staff in the county commission worked real hard to address those issues, and I, I look forward to us fulfilling the commitments to restore the, the, the barns and, and supporting our ag and our and the rest of the community, particularly with the, with the outdoor arena. And I think that you guys have done an outstanding job. I want to thank staff. I want to thank the commission on this. And I think, again, uh, we, we did pare it down a little bit where we could have gone, but I think like what I appreciate is the, is, is the big picture that we're getting, and it's, and I'm really excited about this. So I'd be willing to make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have one more. Commissioner wants to speak. Commissioner Henson.
Hi, thank you, Byron. So could you, I know you briefly listed the, uh, the items that we're, that we're approving funding for today. Could you just very briefly for the public and because I'm very excited about the, these improvements, it's really going to enhance our events and people's experience at our events and just using the park. Can you talk about maybe the, the gulch, the, the flood mitigation and maybe end the wifi? Because those are two things that will really, that I think are very easy to understand that will really highlight what we're trying to do here at the park.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, the wifi actually is included in what you're approving today, which is part of the site infrastructure improvements. So they're actually building that as we speak. The Brantner Gulch is not included in this dollar amount. You've previously approved that project. But what the Brantner Gulch is doing is getting the fairgrounds out of the floodplain. So with that, any type of construction we do moving forward, we won't have to mitigate the floodplain, and we're also significantly reducing the risk not only to Riverdale Regional Park, but also to the surrounding community around Riverdale Regional Park.
Great, thank you. And thank you for correcting that I was, that I was confusing two different, uh, fun, funding approvals. But yeah, the wifi, I think everybody can identify with when you're out at an event and you're trying to keep track of your family, and we, and you're trying to purchase something from a vendor or an artisan there. It's, you know, we, we want to make those, have that seamless experience for people out there. So I think that it will be really exciting for all of us, and I'm happy to support this today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? All right. So I just need a motion for this item.
Motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Second. And that passes five to zero. Thank you, Byron.
Thank you. Our next item is a resolution approving an Amendment Four between Adams County and Securitas Security Services USA, Inc., in the amount of $2,592,061.95 for countywide security services. And to present this item is Amir Fakir, Director of Facilities and Fleet Management.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm here to present a resolution for approving Amendment Four to the countywide security contract that was contracted with Securitas. A little bit of history. In 2023, Adams County awarded security services to Securitas USA, Inc. It was renewed in 25, 4/25, and we are actually, want to give you a sample of the locations where this, the contract is deployed. We have the animal shelter, the judicial center, human services here at the GC, and all of our motor vehicles. So it's a very large contract, and it's a very countywide. I was the actual project manager on this one. We actually got the contract in 23. Today, we're talking about Amendment Four. There's threefold why it's recommended that we renew this. Uh, we need the 2025 services for Adams County, countywide. There's a 3% escalation that's in the contract, automatic based on the contract terms, and the addition of two guards here at the government center. And a little bit of history on the amendments thus far for this contract. The original agreement was for $2,482,132. Amendment One was no cost, but it was an added service for the animal shelter. The second amendment was the, um, sort of an administrative amendment, adjustment where we added overtime hourly rates to the pricing list. Amendment Three, there was a 3% added to the pricing per the escalation agreement in the contract. Here with Amendment Four, it is recommended for the amount of $2,592,061.95. That will be a total not to exceed an agreement amount of $7,590,758.95. Any questions?
Any questions for Amir? Commissioner Odoricio.
Yes, thank you so much for covering all this and keeping our folks safe. I know it's like Amendment Three was the added to the 2, 3% to the pricing form, but someone doing math will be like, well, that's not 3%. Can you help explain why that was 2.5 million, which was basically double what the original agreement was?
For which amendment, sir?
I was looking at the, the history, and then I was like, wait a minute, I forget when we approved that Amendment Three, and I know we're talking about Amendment Four here. But what happened was the original contract was 2.4 million. Amendment Three was 2.5, and it said added to 3% pricing form. I don't remember what that was.
I don't have the math in front of me.
Phone a friend is coming.
But our, yeah, I know.
Our purchasing team is here.
So purchasing agent Jennifer Tierney.
Good morning, commissioners. Amendment Three was actually a renewal, so the initial contract. And then we did Amendment Three for a renewal, so it's a renewal for the next upcoming year, and then we had a 3% escalator on that, and of course, we manage in if they add additional guards, um, to that service. So that's what Amendment Three was.
That totally makes sense. And so thank you again for, and this is Amendment Four.
This is another renewal for 2025, and then the 3% escalator on that.
Understood.
I would move to approve as presented.
Thank you. I'll second. And that passes five to zero. Thank you, Amir.
Thank you.
And lastly, our item that was escalated to new business is a resolution approving a purchase order between Adams County and Joe Johnson Equipment LLC in the amount of $772,324 for the purchase of two Elgin Broom Bear Street Sweepers, a cooperative agreement. And once again, our Fleet Operations Manager, Mike Gutierrez, will present this item.
Good morning again, commissioners. Mike Gutierrez, Fleet Operations Manager. Fleet and facilities management has budgeted to replace two street sweepers in 2025 that have reached and exceeded its full useful lifecycle. We will, we will replace these sweepers with Elgin Broom Bear bottles. We will be using the Sourcewell and their cooperative purchasing agreement. List price for each sweeper is $405,875. Minus the Sourcewell 3% and 2% multi-unit discount from the dealer, cost for each street sweeper will be $385,999. We are recommending that a purchase order be issued to Joe Johnson Equipment LLC for two 2025 Elgin Broom Bear Street Sweepers for not to exceed amount of $771,998. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mike. Questions from the board? Commissioner Odoricio.
Yes, thank you so much. Um, I, I, in my mind, I remember us talking about how we had some challenges with street sweepers. Many years ago before this board, we were talking about expanding street sweeping as an effort. And we were going to have like four or five of these things that run in at all times, okay? And then we got into some situation, right, where we couldn't maintain some of the ones that we own. Can you help just refresh my recollection?
So I could tell you, I've been here since 1995, and we've always had six street sweepers.
Okay.
In 2018, I was supposed to replace four street sweepers. Two of those were removed, so we only have four street sweepers. So we no longer have a spare street sweeper.
Got it.
So right now, um, operational wise, right now, there's only three that are operational. One had a catastrophic rear engine failure. Parts were not available. We ended up doing a long block, but we're slowly getting that back together. That is one of the sweepers that we'd like to replace as soon as possible.
I love hearing that, that we want to get rid of. My concern was that I thought we were also going to explore, it has nothing, no negative on you guys, you guys are outstanding, but because we couldn't get the equipment or the parts, and we had some that were out for an extended period of time, we were going to possibly explore going to like just contract the service out as opposed to us buying them. And I don't think we had that conversation. So that was, that was like for me today saying, I don't know if we want to hold off on this purchase, or what's the timing if we need to do this now versus hold off, have the broader discussion. I would be okay with, and it would not, again, it's not a criticism on anything you guys are doing. It's more just the overall broad concern that once one goes out and if we don't have the parts or we have a challenge, then we're basically out that service.
Sure. I would, I would, if, if we're going to continue with the sweeping program, I would like to be able to add another two machines, so we'd have a total of six. That way, if four operators are out at any time, if one goes down, you have a, basically a spare unit to be able to use to keep it, your operational. That way, if four operators are out at any time, if one goes down, you have a basically a spare unit to be able to use to keep it operational. But that could be a conversation for later on. So like I say, we used to have six sweepers and now we cut that to four back in 2018.
So four plus spare is five? Help me understand the six.
We, we used to have six. So in 2018, we were supposed to replace four machines. We only replaced two. Two were sold at auction, so we came down to four. So that's all we have right now.
Got it. I would be okay with holding up. Tell me, is there a timely issue on this today?
Of adding additional?
Of needing to make this approval today.
Oh, yeah. Well, the sooner we order, the sooner we receive the machines.
Yeah, I get that. Okay, thank you so much. Again, it's no crit-
I'm getting some help here, so.
You guys are, you guys are doing a great job. This is no criticism on you. It's more bigger, broader question about our approach and our, of this particular function.
Janet Legless for Public Works and sorry, Mike, to jump in your show here. The issue that we would have by delaying this is we already have only three operational right now. Yes, our street sweeping program is one aspect that we use the street sweeper for, but we also use it for a lot of our project work. So anytime we're doing a crack fill project, anytime we're doing a full depth, anytime we're doing potholes, we also need the street sweepers for that. So delaying the purchase of the additional street sweeper impacts our level of service that we can provide, not only for our projects, but for the public. And I will also mention that, yes, there probably were discussions in the past when we were originally having these conversations seven years ago. Contracting, street sweeping is very expensive. It is also not as efficient as us having that material where we can have access to it 24/7 as we need in emergency situations. So there are huge drawbacks to that. Not to say that we can't have those conversations, but the reality of it is we need these sweepers. And contracting is not as a silver bullet as you would think it would be. So just add some other points of context to the conversation.
Thank you, Janet. Did you have a follow up?
That's actually very helpful for me. And so I think it, it lays into, it helps clarify that the street sweeping is not just the stuff that's out there for environmental and aesthetics, but it's also part of our construction process and I appreciate that. I would be fine with proceeding today and that we could still come back to the board with a study session on if we want to enhance or get more in the other areas of environmental, meaning like dust mitigation and PM 10, 2.5 and PM 10, as well as aesthetics, then maybe we do a hybrid approach. And that's where we could do like contracting for that additional stuff on that side, but not slow up the construction side because you guys are doing a lot of great work on the transportation construction. So I'd be okay with supporting this today based on that, but okay.
And if I may, thank you for the kind words, Commissioner. Also, we are planning on doing an operational update with all of our programs that we offer through Public Works. We're aiming for the end of April, first part of May, so we can have that in-depth conversation, not only on street sweeping, but what we're doing in drainage, what we're doing in potholing, what we're doing in gravel road maintenance. So it is coming if, you know, if that is something you guys can mark it on your calendar as a must-not-miss study session.
Thank you, Janet. Any other Commissioners? Okay, not at this time.
All right, then I'll move to approve as presented. Thank you.
Second. Or that way. So I have a motion by Pinter, second by Odoricio.
I second Emma's motion.
The motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks. That's all for new business.
Great, thank you. County Attorney.
Good morning Commissioners. I would ask that we go into executive session today pursuant to Colorado revised statute 2464024B for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding potential legal implications of changes to federal orders and regulations.
So moved. That passes five to zero. Thank you, Heidi. All right, so we need a quick break for land use setup. Okay. Time is 9:58. Why don't we come back at 10:05 and we'll start the land use hearing at that time? Okay, the time is 10:05 and we're going to go ahead and reconvene to hear the land use hearing cases.
Okay, good morning Commissioners. My name is Leah Campbell. I'm a planner with the Community and Economic Development Department. And the case before you is PRC 2024-13 Goldenfield Subdivision filing one preliminary plat. And it's about a quarter mile east of the Pedersen Road and east on 144th Avenue intersection. So there are two requests as part of this application. The first is for a major subdivision preliminary plat to create six lots on a 38 acre property within the agricultural one zone district. The property does contain one plugged and abandoned oil and gas well. I'll talk about that a little bit more on the plat slide. And also we have a condition pertaining to that, so we'll go over that on the condition slide as well. And then the second request is for a waiver from subdivision design standards for a private roadway. Our subdivision design standards do require that all roads within a subdivision be public and dedicated to the county. So if applicants want a private roadway, they go through the subdivision design waiver request. And then as a little bit of background on this case, on May 21st, 2024, the Board of County Commissioners approved a request to rezone the property from A3 to A1. So here is the aerial view of the site. I did put an icon of the whole county up in the corner, so you can see where it is overall. It's in the northern portion of the county, a little bit more towards the west, but kind of towards the center, east-west of the county. It is about a quarter mile east of the Pedersen Road and it fronts on east 144th. There are two single-family home subdivisions in the general area. This one that's to the north of east 144th, the lot sizes are about one to three acres. And then this development that's to the south of east 144th, the lots are about three to five acres. So here is more zoomed in aerial view of the site. As you can see, the property is totally undeveloped as well as many of the properties adjacent to the site. And I'll wait a second until he gets his headset. Can you hear me okay? Can you hear okay? Can you hear? Can you hear me? Test, test. Test, test. Good?
Great, okay.
Thank you, guys. Okay, here is the current zoning map of the site. The subject property is zoned A1. These properties that I mentioned in the previous slide with single-family homes subdivision developments are zoned A1 with a PUD overlay. And the purpose of the agricultural one zone district is to provide a rural, single-family home zone district with a minimum lot size of 2.5 acres and a minimum lot width of 150 feet. So here's the future land use map. The subject site as well as several of the adjacent properties have the future land use designation of agricultural small scale. There's also some agricultural large scale in the area, some parks and open space. And then these developments that I mentioned have the future land use designation of residential low. So let's talk about the waiver from subdivision design standards for the private roadway. This is the criteria staff uses when reviewing for this request. One, there's an extraordinary hardship or practical difficulties result from strict compliance to these standards and regulations. The purpose of these standards and regulations are served to a greater extent by the alternative proposal and the waiver does not have the effect of nullifying the purpose of these standards and regulations. Staff feels that due to the rural nature of the property and the distance from facilities and maintenance equipment, that there's a hardship for the county to maintain this road and that the purpose of the standards and regulations are served to a greater extent if the homeowners in this subdivision, if approved, are in charge of maintaining the road. And the waiver does not have the effect of nullifying the purpose of these standards and regulations. And here's the criteria staff uses when reviewing for a major subdivision preliminary plat. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's consistent with the standards and regulations. It conforms with the subdivision design standards. There's adequate water supply. There's adequate sewer supply. Any soil or topographical conditions have been identified and are compatible with the proposal. There's adequate drainage infrastructure. The development density is compatible with zoning density standards. And it's compatible and harmonious with the surrounding area, not detrimental to future development of the area and not detrimental to the welfare of residents. So I have two slides that show the proposed plat. This one's a little bit of a simpler layout and then on the next slide, it's a little bit more detailed. So let's talk about some of the criteria. So staff does feel that this proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the purpose of the agricultural small scale, future land use to balance housing and agricultural production. It's consistent with the development standards as all the proposed lots meet the minimum lot size and minimum lot width of the agricultural one zone district. It's also complies with all the subdivision design standards with the exception of the private roadway, which is under consideration in this case. It's compatible with the A1 density standards of one primary dwelling permitted per 2.5 acres as all of these lots are greater than five acres. And so then here's a little bit more detailed proposed plat. So there is adequate water and sewer supply. Staff confirmed that. We've also confirmed that there's adequate drainage infrastructure. There have been no identified geological hazards. And due to existing single-family home in the, in the area and the future land use designation of agricultural small scale, we do feel that it's compatible with the surrounding area. And then here, if you can see it, sorry, it's a little small, but this is where the plugged and abandoned well is. It is platted with the required buffer of 100 by 50 feet. So nothing can be built within that buffer. It's also within a drainage easement, so it's sort of double protected against anything being built in that area. And then we'll talk about the condition that we've put on it as well on the condition slide. So here are my photos from my site visit. Here we're looking north directly into the property. Here we're looking west along east one hundred forty fourth. Here we're looking east along east one hundred forty fourth and here we're looking south across east one hundred forty fourth out from the property. All property owners and occupants within one mile were notified with this request. Forty five notifications were sent. Zero comments were received. I did receive a few questions about the request, but I never received any comments in support or opposition. All applicable referral agencies were notified of the requests. There were initial comments from Core Electric, but the applicant was able to work out their needs. So this case was heard by the Planning Commission on February thirteenth, twenty twenty five. There was no public comment. They did have some questions about the private roadway and they ultimately recommended approval seven zero. So staff feels that this complies with the comprehensive plan and development standards. And it's compatible with the surrounding area and we are recommending approval of the preliminary plat with nine findings of fact, three conditions of approval and three notes to the applicant. So here are the recommended findings of fact and I had a table on the first one. On that last slide, it's actually twelve findings of fact. So I can update that. And then here are the recommended conditions of approval and the notes. So this first condition is for the oil, the plugged and abandoned well. So it states that oil and gas wells, all associated equipment, pipelines and flow lines shall be shown on the final plat along with the associated setbacks in effect at the time of the final plat. If flow lines are abandoned in place, those shall be shown on the final plat. The status of all wells and flow lines shall be confirmed through reports from the Colorado Energy and Carbage Management Commission. So that concludes my presentation and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So I'm going to go over the land use process. The staff presentation is first, which we just heard, then it comes back to the board for questions. Then the applicant has an opportunity to also make a presentation. Then it comes back to the board for questions for the applicant. Then the public comment period is next. So if you're here for a public comment for this particular land use, we'll call on you at that time. You do have three minutes to speak and then I will say it thirty seconds when your, before your time is up. After public comment, the applicant has an opportunity to respond if requested. It will come back to the board for discussion and then we'll look for a motion from the board. So at this time, are there any questions from the board for staff? Commissioner Mollica?
Yeah, quick question. I actually have two questions. One is about the private roadway. How do these work in these situations? Is there like an HOA or something that's established by the community, the small community here to help manage that roadway and everyone just kind of pays into that?
Yeah, so the applicant can speak more to this, but yes, that will be the case here and that's generally the case that we require or want to see that there is some sort of management, management structure for the private roadway.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And then I have a question about the oil and gas wells on this location. What requirements do or does the applicant need to comply with when it comes to kind of mitigating any of that? I mean, is that overseen by the state or how does that work?
So the only requirements that we have in a plat case is that they, that they must be mapped, the equipment and that it must, there must be a buffer that's mapped as well. So a fifty foot by one hundred foot buffer showing that nothing can be built within that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners for questions for staff? Commissioner Hudson?
Thank you. So the proposal, am I getting ahead of myself? No, this is about also involves this private road application. Okay, so that's because, so that they would be taking the residents of this, future residents of these homes then are taking upon themselves the responsibility to maintain that private road?
That's correct.
Okay, so that we, okay, so one hundred and forty, are we, are, do we maintain one hundred and forty fourth regarding snow removal and dire, and lizards or what have you? Or what are, what are our responsibilities to one hundred and forty fourth Avenue there?
Hundred forty fourth is a public roadway and is hundred percent maintained by the county.
So it does have some impact to the county in that because there will now be people living just immediately north there that, I mean, not that we wouldn't already be maintaining it, but it does, it is a factor that we will have residents living there now to make sure that that roadway is, is cleared in the case of extreme weather.
Correct. It, it will have regular maintenance.
Okay. And then could you help, help me understand in layperson's terms, the difference, this, the zoning they're applying for is what designation?
So it's currently zoned as agricultural one. And the future land use designation is agricultural small scale.
And what's the difference between those two, please?
So the, the zone district is what it's currently zoned as. It, it determines what is currently allowed on the property. And the future land use designation determines what we want to see there in the future. So if someone were going for rezoning, we would look at the future land use designation and say the, the zoning that you're applying for matches or doesn't match what the future land use designation is.
Right. So, 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 so light, light agricultural and A one, are those the same?
They, small, the agricultural small scale supports agricultural one.
Okay, so that's compatible. And so in the future, could the properties adjacent also be applying then for this type of, of residential development?
They could as long as they had the water to support it. That's really, I think, the big thing out here is if, if those properties had the water rights to further subdivide, then they could apply.
But the end this, and as you've said a couple of times, there is sufficient water supply for these proposed homes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions for now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners on this matter? Okay, then we have the applicant present. If you'd like to come down and make a presentation at this time. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is David Anderson and this is my wife.
Hi, I'm Angela Anderson. Good morning.
And our address is currently in Alaska. It's P O box. We have our official P O box, one 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 seven four five Anchorage, Alaska, nine nine five one one. We also have a residence here in, or in Aurora, down over by Aurora Reservoir. So we own a home in that subdivision. So yeah, the, the, the project is exciting to us and Leah has presented very well, all of the issues and the, the presentation. Just as far as additional information that might be applicable. We did apply for Colorado water rights for, for the property, which they granted for all four aquifers below the, the the property. And that is how we obtained adequate water supply. And as far as the waiver of the road is concerned, we are planning on building that road according to county standards, except we aren't paving the road. And that is what is generating the waiver. Outside of that, we will be having a, as, as the subdivision builds out, as the lots are sold and houses are built, there will be, there is going to be a, a an HOA in place to generate income to, that will maintain that road. That will be pretty much the purpose of it. Is to maintain the road on a yearly basis, even every six months basis. We do want to maintain a good driving surface, even though it's going to be unpaved conditions. And so that's going to be important to us to maintain good driving surfaces.
And I would just add that my husband is a licensed engineer in the state of Colorado. And so, and his expertise is soil engineering. And so being able to put together a, a road that's adequate for this subdivision is paramount to us.
We've built a few roads, so.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to add?
That would be it. Do you have any questions for us?
Okay, questions from the board? I'm not seeing any. So none at this time. If you'd like to take a seat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They seem like they know what they're in for.
All right. Do we have anyone signed up for public comments?
No, we do not.
No. Okay. So is there anyone in the public here that would like to speak to this matter? Okay. Not seeing anybody. We're back to the commissioners for discussion on this item. Commissioner Mollica?
A quick question, and I guess this is more for staff. Is, so in situations like this, we're going to have an HOA that is then supposed to maintain this road. What happens if the HOA dissolves? Does the county then take over that road or how does that work?
Hello, Matt Emin, Senior Engineer with Adams County. In that case, the, the track is actually owned by all the property owners. So they, they are required to maintain it or they don't have access to the property. If access got too poor, I'm sure the fire department would have something to say about that. So they, they are kind of obligated as part of the requirement of our responsibility of buying that home.
Okay. Okay, other questions? Commissioner Odorizio?
So it'll be community property. And then there will likely be covenants to establish ownership and obligations, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. The reason I ask that is because there are times where it always sounds good upfront when people say, we're going to maintain this road, but invariably when a decade or two goes by, I'm getting phone calls now where people are asking us, why are you letting this turn into something? And so it'll ultimately be on the property owners. I would recommend, but not necessarily require it here, but that they, since they're going to be signing covenants that would actually be part of this, I would suspect they should have noticed, but I would recommend that, that be done by the developer as much as, as transparently as possible and clearly. But I, I don't plan on getting us into the middle of this because all the record that we need from our perspective is being made now. So I'm okay with where we're going unless the attorneys have any recommendations. But I would suspect that that would have been included by now. Okay?
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners? All right. None at this time. So I'm looking for a motion for this item.
I move to approve the preliminary plat for PRC twenty four dash thirteen with twelve findings of fact, three conditions of approval and three notes to the applicant.
Second. And the motion passes five to zero. So congratulations and welcome. Good luck.
Alrighty. Hello again. My name is Leah Campbell. I'm a planner with the Community and Economic Development Department. And the case before you is PRC twenty twenty four dash three Tapia residences subdivision and rezoning at seventy one ninety Converse Road. So here are the requests. There's two requests as part of this application. The first is for a zoning map amendment to rezone a property of approximately thirty nine acres to agricultural two from agricultural three. And the second is for a major subdivision preliminary plat to create three lots in the resulting agricultural two zone district. A little bit of background, the Board of County Commissioners approved a comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use of the subject site from agricultural large scale to agricultural small scale on May fourteenth, twenty twenty four. So here is an aerial view of the site and I did include an icon of the county. So you can see where it is overall. It's a little hard to see, but it's almost halfway between the eastern border and the western border. And then it's in the, in about the southern third, just a little bit to the west of highway seventy nine. It's on the corner of Converse Road and East Seventy Second Avenue. And here is a more zoomed, zoned in, zoomed in aerial view of the site. There, it doesn't show, it's a little bit of an older aerial, doesn't show that there is a single family home on the property. There was a, a building permit approved for a single family home. So here is the current zoning map. The subject site as well as most of the adjacent properties have the current zoning of agricultural three. There is also some agricultural two in the area and A one with a P U D P overlay. And here is the future land use slide. The subject site as well as the site to the, directly to the north has the future land use of agricultural small scale. The intent of this designation is small agricultural operations which balance housing and agricultural production. So let's talk about the zoning map amendment first. This is the criteria staff uses when reviewing for a zoning map amendment. One, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Two, it's consistent with development standards. Three, it complies to the development standards. And four, it's harmonious and compatible to the surrounding area. So let's look at the A twos on district dimensional standards. The subject site does meet the minimum, does meet the, the standards and regulations as the minimum lot size for A two is ten acres and the existing is thirty nine acres. And then the minimum lot width is four hundred twenty five feet and the existing is over twelve hundred feet. And the A two zone district is a supported zone district with the agricultural small scale future land use designation. So it is consistent with the comprehensive plan as well. And here is the criteria staff uses when reviewing for a major subdivision preliminary plat. One, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Two, it's consistent with the standards and regulations. Three, there's conformance with the subdivision design standards. Four, there's adequate water supply. Five, there's adequate sewer supply. Six, any soil or topographical conditions have been identified and are compatible with the proposal. There's adequate drainage infrastructure. The development density is compatible with the zoning density standards. And it's compatible and harmonious with the surrounding area, not detrimental to the future development of the area and not detrimental to the welfare of the residents. So here is the proposed plat that the applicant submitted. Staff feels that this proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan as the agricultural two zone district is supported by the agricultural small scale future land use designation. And it's consistent with the development standards as all of the lots are over twelve acres in size and the minimum lot size for A two is ten acres. It's also consistent with all the development design standards. It's compatible with the A two density standards of one permitted primary dwelling per ten acres. Staff determine that there is adequate water and sewer supply. There is adequate drainage infrastructure. No geological hazards have been identified. And due to the future land use designation and some A two in the area, staff does feel that this is compatible with the surrounding area. So here are photos from my site visit. Here we're looking north along Converse Road. Here we're looking south along Converse Road. Here we're looking west across Converse Road out from the property. And here we're looking east straight into the property. All property owners and occupants within one mile were notified of this request. Fifty six notifications were sent and one comment was received. One comment of opposition with concern of what the effect would be on adjacent properties. All applicable referral agencies were notified of this request. There were initial comments from Core Electric with concern about their easements and the applicant was able to work that out with them. And then initial comments from Division of Water Resources and the applicant was able to work that out with them and confirm that they did have the water availability on site. So this was heard at Planning Commission on February twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. There is no public comment. There were questions about the dedicated roadway and they recommended approval seven zero. So staff feels that this complies with the comprehensive plan and development standards and it's compatible with the surrounding area. And we are recommending approval of the rezoning and preliminary plat with thirteen findings of fact and three notes to the applicant. And we are recommending approval of the rezoning preliminary plat with 13 findings of fact and three notes to the applicant. Sorry, skipped over that. Here are the recommended findings of fact. And here are the recommended notes, and that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Fantastic. Thank you. Questions from the board for staff? Commissioner Hudson?
Thank you. So can you just talk a little bit more about Core, the, the Core Electric, their concerns? And has that been satisfied?
Yeah, they were just concerned, they were just making certain that there were easements for their utilities. And they went back and forth with the applicant a little bit and then were able to confirm that they have access to all the utilities in the area.
Okay, great. And then, and I guess that's only on the question for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any others? I'm going to go over the process one more time. Doesn't look like the attendance in the room has changed. So the next up will be the applicant's presentation, then questions from the board. Anyone in the public that's here to talk for the land use hearing, we'll call on you at that time. Then the applicant has an opportunity to respond if requested back to the board for discussion and then we'll look for a motion. So at this time, if the applicant, please come down and state your name and address for the record.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Alan Lee. I'm the project, I'm, I'm the architect on this project. My address is 6302 East 142nd Place, Thornton, 80602. Thank you.
Good morning, morning. My name is Fontapia. I'm the owner of this property. My address is 49652 East County Road, 6 Bennett, Colorado.
I think, we think Leah's presentation pretty much covered everything that we wanted to present. But I guess I just wanted to add that my client, the applicant thinks that this would be a mutually beneficial project or development. As, you know, they are bringing more, you know, housing needs into this area, into this community. Just by subdividing, subdividing this line to three, they are providing, opening up two more lots for more future owners to own their dream homes on, on, on the, in this community. And of course, by doing this, at the same time, they are improving the overall public infrastructure. And of course, this will bring more, you know, revenue for the county too. Thank you.
Yeah, like Alan said, there's a housing shortage, so this would make a small contribution to solving this problem by adding two more lots for future homeowners to build a dream house. So this is the goal of our project here.
Okay.
We're here to answer any questions.
Fantastic. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Commissioner Odoricio.
So as we, I'm looking at the, can you go back to the map? I'm sorry, the surrounding area. I was just. We're likely to see more of these once, once we, right? Like, is this similar to the one that's up to the north and to the west, right? Kind of situation?
So on this slide, this is the future land use map. All of the lime green has a, is the future land use designation of agricultural small scale. So those ones will have the opportunity to further subdivide.
Yeah. I just, I wanted to be known that we're likely to see more and more of these. And I don't have a problem with it. I just know that the community at some point in the future will come to us and say, look at what you've done to change everything. And we'll be like, yes. So I have no problem. I'll support this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Own the decisions.
Own the decisions. Nope. Okay, no additional questions at this time. Thank you for being here.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment for this item?
No, we do not.
Okay, is there anyone, okay, the gentleman at the top would like to speak to this item? Do you want to take a microphone up, Stephanie, or?
Can I speak now?
Yes. If you can please state your name and address for the record. Thank you, Stephanie. If you can please state your name and address for the record, sir, and then you can speak. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Bobby Hoy, H O Y. I presently own 80 acres. Probably about two, a mile and a half from the proposal that we're discussing today. I'm not a gifted speaker, so bear with me. I'm 92 years old and this is my first attempt at doing anything like this. But my great, biggest objection is the source of water. I'm an avid reader of National Geographic and I probably got about four volumes at home that I have saved and all relates to scarcity of water. And you go to the Midwest and you see how much the water table has been drawn down. And Bennett currently is, is developing their fourth housing development out there. I've had property out there off of 87th since about 1986. And I don't know, I don't think we're really giving any thought to them. I don't know of any aqua, aquifer that is being replenished to this day. They're all being drawn down minute by minute. And the state of Texas, in reading some of my articles, their panhandle, their places and their panhandle in Texas, they can't even get water. They don't have any wells. And I know, I see the growth out there at Bennett as if it's aspiring to become a parker. But I mean, I guess King Supers is a big magnet out there. But I'm just, I just don't approve of more development where you're going to put more properties on, on a certain amount of land and draw it all down with multiple wells. That's my main concern. But I've, I've never been over here before. I drove all the way to Aurora and I noticed all the massive development just getting here from, from Aurora, Colorado. And it scares me to death. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your attendance today. Yes, Commissioner Pinter.
Thank you so much. It's my understanding after a public comment, if it's concluded that it comes back to commission. I just would like to say thank you, Stephanie, for your assistance and welcome and thank you for coming, sir, and providing your first ever public comment. The comments from the public were really sincere and really important. The scarcity of water in Colorado is a really important issue that we're all paying close attention to. It has been my experience serving on this body that we have no control over the evaluation of water sustainability and that evaluation is completed by the state and by the applicant. And so if someone could provide a comment on who evaluates water availability and impact on the local existing water availability by the creation of a new development.
The Division of Water Resources evaluates that.
Okay. And we have any oversight or no oversight at all on their process?
We do not have any oversight of their process.
But they take it seriously and they would take all of these factors into consideration as they make their evaluation on water availability?
That's my understanding.
Okay. That's my understanding as well, you know, having served in this capacity for a number of years. So thank you for that and I hope they take this application seriously as they do all the others.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners? Questions for the applicant?
So I get, my question is they have, there has already been an evaluation of the impact of this subdivision on water resources in the area.
That's correct.
Okay. And no, and no red flags on that?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you to staff. Not seeing any additional commissioner discussion, then we'll take a motion for this item.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning of the preliminary plat, P R 24-03 with 13 findings of fact and three notes to the applicant.
I would second that. The motion passes five to zero. Congratulations and good luck with your development. Thank you to the applicant. Thank you for the gentleman for public comment this morning. With no additional items on today's agenda, we are adjourned at 10:45 a.m.